The meeting of the work section of the county commission. The board. I'll go over our agenda for next Monday night. It's the main reason we're here. Really happy to see everybody out tonight. We do have several people that are on vacation and why they're not here tonight. That's the traffic out there. That are supposed to be back next week. Our invitation will be by Amber Russell. I don't see her here. A level check is permanent, so if you don't have that. Mr. Dickie, have you down to do the pledge? Believe it's in the pledge. Amendments from the May 24th meeting or any of the packets. If anyone sees anything amiss or remiss in that, it needs to be addressed. Certainly if you run across something and looking them over, let us know that we can correct that before next week's meeting. Yes, ma'am.
Good as long as prayer.
We just sat down and just made a schedule out of everybody's name.
One's been by district, the other one's in that. It's up to me on August 3rd, years ago. I don't want one, one choice.
You didn't take mine. I mean, there's twenty-one of us. It's not only roll around the list every two years, you know, the third year before you be back down again. But that's how we, that's what we did. Like we've always handled. I wrote things like this. Like I say, that doesn't put none of your burden on anyone. He's gonna get it once every, every year. Didn't see anything in the minutes at this point, so far for good reason. Announcements, right now, have any, Mayor, do you have any announcements? Or, okay. Amendments to the agenda. I said, we do have some appointments that we'd like to add. Library Board appointments. Under appointments, a couple of those. There'll be three people serving a four-year term. And it'll be Amy Davenport, Janessa Ellis, and Tina Hanks. Three names we could call forward to going to Library Board. Library Board, I think, sexually, they can only serve fifty seconds terms and then they have to be replaced. That's one reason that people don't always, you will see them coming up probably more often than some of the committees that are not required to be limited time operations. Also, we have two resolutions that we want to add. They came out of the building committee meeting last Thursday night. This is the Resolution 2021 17741. Concerning election commission offices. And also 2021 18722. Concerning the water department building. You should have received copies of them. If you did not, see if somebody else to get one of those, so if you have. That's the only additions that I have to the agenda. Mayor, do you have anything?
No, sir.
And is that it? Let's go right into. We'll have force of citizens response to the agenda where we ask them to sign in if they would like to speak in your agenda. And then the mayor's report, Mayor, do you have any comments or ideas?
Yes, we did receive a local parks and recreation fund grant project. They presented an article on that, please let us know. This is a grant we could have to do maybe eight or nine months ahead. It puts a play in the trade park. It is a fifty-fifty match grant. We didn't see the whole over ninety-four thousand dollars, so hopefully. I'll have them do next week or so, we don't have to follow up. Meeting with us to kind of go over what our important requirements are and how the grants are going to operate. So look forward to being able to start it on that as soon as we can. We did receive word that we did not receive the multiple grant. This was the grant out that they should be able to put in the streets. They wrote people with intersection. My house will talk to a company and stupid about Mexican grill cheese and citizen bank. But they did say it was very competitive or thirty-eight brands. It's going five out of nine places. They would meeting with us, kind of let us know. Make some changes in there and sort of a little bit higher on the next one. So we'll take advantage of that as we figure for how we go forward there. We have received the last check for payment of the street state grant. For the, on the street state project for all of the. Paying from the state on that. We have received the last check today. We don't have a million dollar documentation together to do the photograph on that. So hopefully next month we can put the photograph in the street state. There is something I want to bring your additions. Attention, going forward, if you have a request for personnel records. I'm going to ask you to submit an open records request of general things we have for that to those. And we need documentation of everything reported or requests of the state employee number, your records have been requested. So going forward, if you have any requests for any kind of personnel record, anything like that, please submit that to my office. Even though the records request. And we're going to do that. We're trying to turn them over to all the departments and coordinate, get some more of the documentation. Make sure all the documentation, the personnel records, just in human resources, all of us. Right now, we're someone who will actually try to get them all in one place because that is information we don't want getting out. And if you make that request, there are three hundred exceptions to the open records act. We got to go through that, sure you comply with all that. Sure, any information is not supposed to be sold today. I also want to make note, whether anybody knows, July 4th, July 4th, or what on the fourth of July, I'm sure they are on the fourth of July. It'll be at nine p.m. After the band is done playing, so they are going to reduce the park also on the fourth of July. So we'll have a visit to the park going into different fireworks. And it is at nine p.m. charge. Just let everybody know for six fireworks. Again, that is July four, at nine p.m. That's all we have for this one, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any questions, Mayor? Move on, many reports, the ones that I have that have met, that I mentioned, please let me know. Standing committee met June first, budget finance met June 21st tonight. Building committee, June 17th. Parks and Rec, June 14th. Prison Relations, June 15th. Were there any other committee meetings that we missed anything? Moving into active business, we have first our appointments and reappointments. Appointments for the beer board. Richard Davis will be filling the vacancy that will end January 31st, 2022. His vacancy, I believe, is in Miss Johnson. That's correct? That's correct? I believe that's correct. Planning Commission, Mayor's putting forth, Sarah Murray. On the planning commission for a four-year term.
Yes, so that's the young lady putting in for the district file. Commissioner position. I'll talk to other people that's. Said they get back here and then they're going to get it. So if he's interested in doing it, he won't get more involved. And so I expect him to go and serve on this and she should be.
In the geographic area that we're looking forward to fill that commission. Also. Fifth district commissioners. Rick Davis. Point him to economic development, education, law enforcement, personnel. We met, sat down, and then overall, the committee sets forward that he felt like he, he could do the least damage again. So that's why I put him on that. Kind of put everybody where they'd like to be. And certainly that's, that, he'll be an asset to all of us. Appreciate being willing to do that. Also, the library board appointments we have are Amy Davenport, Janessa Ellis, and Tina Hanks. I believe these will all be a four-year appointment. That's correct? A four-year appointment. Any questions on any other appointments? Next, moving to resolutions. First resolution we have is 2021 15719. This is a resolution concerning the chair of the organization, the non-profit organizations. This is for next year's budget. We have to designate these by resolution. We have tax, training, two thousand dollars with criminal resources. Seventy-five hundred dollars. Trial of county health center, five thousand, I saw five thousand dollars. And the chamber of Congress, fifteen thousand for total, twenty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. Going to the various agencies. Any questions on that? Next, we have Resolution 2021 16720. This is the lease agreements for firms that are holding a year. These things are used in our daily operations. Phone networks, copiers, data processors, elevator, maintenance agreement, things of that nature. As you can see there, a litany there. We need to approve these lease agreements. So if they can contractually go ahead and reopen. Saying that in great way. Guess we're given authority to go ahead and maintain those. That's good.
Is your term on this?
We do, we do.
Just going to do a yearly?
Well, some of them may be longer than a year, but we, we had authorized. Next, the Resolution 2021 16721. This is one that was given to you tonight, came forward from buildings, the buildings committee. This first one is a resolution to direct the relocation of the election commission offices from their current location here to the county courthouse. There will have another agent within the ag services and they need additional office space. The election commission is also putting on a full-time, part-time person. So they'll have a little personnel. So that building is not going to accommodate that. We looked at all possible places that we could move them to. The health department, juggling, a lot of things. This seems to be the best course of action. And this was recommended by the building committee to to move their offices here and have that accomplished by February 1st next year. We've already started on the renovations and offices that they're using right there. And also it will authorize the county attorney to use all legal links necessary to ensure that this thing happens. Any questions on this? Did I get that right, Mr. Horne?
Yes, that's correct.
I believe that is, was that unanimous?
It was unanimous.
Unanimous, so. Now, the mayor has spent a lot of time and myself looking at options, trying to figure out what could be done. This is, this seems to be overall the best, best thing we can come up with. Any questions? Next, is Resolution 2021 18722. This is a resolution to authorize the water utility district to construct a new building on the back corner of Lot 3.8 Broadway. Utility board voted to build a new building. They had actually purchased part of the property there a few years ago. Raised the question, how can the county department build a building on county property without the county commission approval? Therefore, building committee looked at it, decided that we needed to do a resolution to that effect, authorizing them to build this building. It was approved for buildings, committee gave approval and sent it forward to, with their approval, to use that property for that purpose. Did I get that correct?
Was that unanimous vote?
No, no.
I'm confused.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so the water department bought this property? Or is it, it's county-owned property? Or is it half?
They bought some additional property from Mr. Hammond several years ago. I believe it was about an acre. Was it?
Point four two?
Point four two, four tenths of an acre. They paid eight thousand dollars out of water bill funds to purchase that property. The property was deemed to the county. Property is in the county's name. They are funding the cost of building this building solely out of the water department funds. It was in the water department budget to build this building. They're not financing it. The county's not going to be the street for it. They have the money to be able to build this building.
I just didn't understand why we had to prove it. If it's their money, their property, why are we?
I agree.
Well, as a department, it can't hold property, property necessarily from the county. When it was a one, you tell you, Mr. Down on the tongue, you could. This is not technically part of the county government. It brought that kind of county building. It can't hold it separate. So here, nobody, they bought it and the county mayor signed the deed. It was an exception, it was filed through the county government. So they're going to read the government to hold it separate. But all this expenditure never been, it started requiring that property and keeping profit, probably informed by the water department.
Yes.
What all this building in town? Are they moving everything back there?
Yes, it will have three drive-through bays, six bays, roller doors. Conference room, train room, bathrooms, two offices. The paint will be taken out there, the driver will end up. So their whole operation, other than the plants, will be moving into that building.
What about the entrance?
Entrance is to be widened. That's part of the project so that it's not just a one-way entrance. It'll be an in-and-out entrance to allow the flow of traffic to be better going through.
When the building is built, will there be any room for expansion?
It's my understanding that there's not.
Where is the building in order that the county gets? I would say using very recently, if made to use the storage for water department records. If you want to do any use, a lot of work on it. If push up the show, you could carry that down and let it expand happen.
Tommy, you want to speak to this? Please come on up over here.
You can't expect, they can have one more bay added on to another, another full lane. Maybe on the building. It's got a wall on the side. That's all expansion, you know, can. And then if you want to take the floor inside of the offices, that could be a filter on top. In the future, so you can't expect some office space. There's a stairway over the top. Four main floors for that reason, just in case it's going through that, some office space.
Basically, what you said is you have to go up to get more room.
Yeah, it probably just be like, you might put some mats and files and the storage that could go over there. We laid out some, some of the parts. It'd be one, one whole wall for shelling and put parts on. For, for reasons, so.
We've been talking about building a huge tank, you know, for two or three years. And all of a sudden, building offices. Which one do you need the worst? Which ones do county need the worst?
Both of them are in the shift, but. With that tank, we're laying on this, we're, we're at a filing for a sorry funds for that. We're waiting here for the term to that. Making areas done for that. Just waiting on the state to give the governor the term to that as well for that. That should be timed out, but that is in the process.
The location been already made for the water tank? You know what it's going to be?
Thirty acres of land under, something weird about it. It's the same height as all the tank. It'll last for once. We do, we got that tank, it'll get rid of three black paper tanks. I'm going to fix it. So it is going to be concrete tank, it's the latest plans moving forward, so. All metal tanks have had at least thirteen, fifteen years to be tanked. We guess I've done it probably less than thirty or closer, so. Shave those tanks. We're also a big man that have to fix it. So it's, we need to fix it or we get older, telling you. So we, we lay out a plan of action to fix the tanks. They had, that would be with the man. Looking forward. We actually have money, was it this year also we have? Pull the tank out of the system and get it fixed. We'll stay and get those tanks that aren't being most fixed. So that's something we had to do a couple of years ago. We weren't toward this solution. It was part of the upgrade ticket, I'll say.
Going back to the building. You're the mayor, one of them said something about it, don't expand the driveways going in and coming out. Is that beside the one that the, where the one is now when you turn in?
Yes, they're wide enough. The line, the coming in line is a wide enough. Drive through, our bills can be drive through, drive back.
So you're going to circle the whole front?
Yes. And I got it wrong, I didn't have a commitment with their offices, but I was still there.
Mr. Dickie?
The question I have, if this building is going to be small when we build it, what happens thirty years now? If it's too small, you'd be moving somewhere else. Why don't you get to go in and buy your property bigger enough, like a couple acres, you can build a bigger building. And accommodate all the activities.
This building, how does our current state quit? Okay. And we got some got people who don't make retirement and got some of the book this year. We got people, we got some training program going on with the bar. Got some big training department, specific job, a lot of people leaving here. I don't know what the lack of place, all of it, so. Right around. But it definitely a lot of people that work in that office.
Another question, I'll ask. What was the big objection to the other people in the building committee that noted this? What was their big objection?
I think it was land off or good madam to the last meeting. You're talking about it.
I raised the biggest objection to, I know they need to build. My objection is square, the building is being squared. That it's not going to allow for growth. If you need, you're, you're taking space that could be used if needed for other purposes at the next ratio. I think it should have been built somewhere else. I raised that, David, we were looking at it to fifty-two and three. It started out as being just a shop building and then all of a sudden had other things and other things and other things that kept me an editor, which kept making it a larger, more of a product. I think initially budgeted five hundred thousand dollars, up that eight hundred thousand dollars, that would have been three, six, two, four, whatever it was. So I, I was the one that voiced the most opposition in the water board meeting. Didn't vote for, didn't vote for the building committee. But the building committee did see that, did feel like they need to build it. We have the land, it takes care of their needs now. And I think the comment was a little worried about, you know, expanding it when we need to expand it. But right now, that's not, didn't seem to be important to, to the rest of the committee. That's my amendment. Yes, ma'am.
I just have a comment, the water board voted for it. And I realize you have your opinion and that's fine. And you voiced it in the water board meeting, but the water board approved it. The building and codes meeting, they approved it, correct?
The building committee approved it.
Approved it. So I feel like we're just, we have these committees, shouldn't we go with their recommendation? Or are you just going to, well, whatever I think is happening.
Well. No, it, it's for the full body to make a decision. Certainly if you feel like it needs to be done. Then we'll do it. You know, and that was my position all along, was this was my reasons why I couldn't vote for it. But that was my reason.
Well, I'm just saying, you're here, you can speak, but other water board members that voted for it are not here and they're not speaking. So I just feel like that's a little.
Certainly look at the minutes from those meetings.
Right, right, and that's fine.
Videotape.
Right.
And but I think that was, that was the gist of it. Mayor, you were in that meeting, was, do you, can you think of anything else that came up this far? Did I represent it accurately?
That's part of the opposition, yes. The support for it, I believe, Ms. Bayes stated she wanted all the staff to be under one roof. And if you build it some reps, they will not be all on one roof. They will be separated. So that's why she went in there. I'm going to comment that, that the whole reasons that I would support building the building is for ground out. A lot of equipment that they're using, their valves and all that stuff is in some of this, the back of the wall. It's not insulated. It's, it's really kind of embarrassing to be honest with you. They'll defend Jacob and support him by having this kind of stuff, makes time for them all there. Not to mention all the equipment is sitting outside. So this is important, it's going to be candy style, fifty bottles, a hundred bottles of dollars. They can't maintain their own, they're sitting outside. New buildings, I think, those that can perform, make some of the equipment last there. And it can be maintained and you can check out whatever, along with their other equipment, hot flabs, all that kind of stuff, you know, they store there. I did share the concern about it being somewhat lean off. However, I don't think it's as bad in the belief of it. And what's it, it's not built north of there. It's really just used for storage around now. If you push up the show, they're letting them down and expanding that way. But also I have the possibility of expanding it in another direction. And as far as that possibly could still exist. But as far as getting to where, like I said, if you want to do more training, it's going to have training space to do that. It's going to have that conference room back while we are. So that was one of the reasons to support it is that if it's going to break, provide a one roof or if you get it somewhere else, it's going to be separated. That was one of the pushes forward and also getting a bit of the rest of the weather, getting out the weather, maintenance of the equipment. The supplies for the top files and all this stuff is kind of unisolated building. So it gets somewhat subject to extreme weather, extreme temperatures. So all those issues can be addressed in this building and that's why we made the, the start construction.
Two run the sewer line, two can probably all right. So that's another problem.
I made that, we spent about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars today. Built this building. That sewer line been built. Very thorough, I remember him thinking that. Well, we, we did try to get another acre of land, but just to our neighbor that's now in their cover. But he was still a bit, sadly, horrible. Put up some storage, just storage. When that didn't happen, we built a one-two building, that's a western facility. It will store bulk material, packs, vials, patents. All of our smaller materials will be stored in the new building. We could not have a no-store decker. We would have known, we would have processed the night. That one in there and all the last, more than down there. Future storage of the naked for parts, larger equipment, like a, the truckers could sit down everywhere. I think it's city. But it does get our emergency equipment in there. It's most all of our blankets or everything out of the weather. So we're, I'm not worried about it. Land off, or so we got other options. We had to make good. Not getting that acre, so we figured out a way to fix it. We made those changes and that, and that's only one thousand dollars, that's sense. Still have the land out here, here to the end, there's land, there was just, that tank's going on, and you should water treat the plant over there. And I don't put a bill out there today, well, that kind of discovered. So we don't have no plants. Was the best place for it. So to build in the wrong place is a whole month. That's why we hadn't, didn't really think about putting it there. We don't have no plants on that. Know where that is, they're the biggest government. As a concept, it's there, it's all out of the engineers, so. As concept, it's there, it's all out of the engineer, so.
I will say, it's not my intention that this resolution can stop this project. It was mine intention for the commission to have a vote. Mr. Baller, I believe, looked at it and said that the commission should have a saying, am I correct in saying this, Phil?
Station requires that the communication that control all all properties. Station requires again, mission that all of the legislative projects, that control all the properties, so they did this. That's what the dance goes without that, as well, and also the expertise in utility business. Give that the same thing, so that's the purpose of the resolution is to approve the transaction. The commission would do that, that's what the necessity is.
Any other questions? Mr. John?
This is a fun battle, you know? That creates funding, we're just, we're not. We're a profit loss, but we have one class, one account, so when you throw the appreciation. It's money that you have, it could be profits, but also the issue of protection. So it's mainly that put back over the years. And when you put this bill on the ground in about two, three years, you'll have that one back in time because you're already paying. Paying the appreciation, you don't have any dollars on appreciation. And if you take it to two, three years, five million to that, because you have to pay because that's required, we have to appreciate it. It's not, so we have to, I don't know, I don't know how the county works personally. I don't know, but yeah, I appreciate everything I did. When we. How many years, forty, four, twenty years?
Forty. Yes.
The water tanks are going to be, y'all going to play that out for months?
It's going to be long. And it's a little bit of help with the.
What it costs?
Six, three, eight, the highest, it might be lower interest rate, so all the time.
Hey, any other questions? Hold on, this is next Monday night. You have other questions, please give a comment. Mr. Moreland, Professor Van, Chairman of the Water Board, certainly have questions. Same you know, Tom, Mike, I said, any other water board members that related to that? This this project's been ongoing for seven years and this is just coming to fruition, Mike. Next, we need the ordinances. First one is six seventeen, twenty twenty-one, I like. This is our appropriations ordinance. Or commonly we call it the budget. Say the only thing that we had to change is a few line items that we went over budget finance concerning the uh two percent increase that is required by the state. That can't get actually put our first budget together, other than that it will be exactly the same. Any questions on it? If we can't take the second and third reading the same night, it will require two thirds of both to be able to do that. Uh, and we will, we will call for that prior to the third reading. See if we want to do that. Any questions on this? We did a bridge for three last month. That's the only thing that's changed. Next, two eighteen, twenty twenty-one, oh nine. This is the ordinance, six, tax legging and the general services fund. This is set the same as last year, two point four three eight eight. Any questions on it? The other three are saying. Two nineteen, twenty twenty-one, ten. This is the appropriation in urban services fund. Uh, we will need motion to vote on that by the urban services camp. I'll be prepared to do that. Next is uh ordinance twenty twenty-one, eleven. And that is the urban services rate. Uh, there again, it said it point eight seven five three. Exactly the same as it was last year. This is passed on first reading, it's like get up on third reading as well. Questions on any of those? Next ordinance is twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, twelve. Uh, this is an ordinance, rezoning ordinance, taking partial land. Identified zero five oh two, we had to have seventeen from A one to R one. Uh, this was recommended by the planning commission last month. And uh, this will be our first reading on this. This property is located out on Wall Grove Roads. Uh, Sam, would you like to speak to it?
Yeah, so this, uh, the. Eric's got more to do, it's property that wants to cut off the one acre. Down with the slots. Sorry, that's that. But they want me to cut off the one acre rather than the. And the dark.
Any questions on it? Mr. John?
So there is a legal restriction of the one acre.
Yeah.
No required access that we have in front of us, so I'm just making sure we be equal there in this court.
The next one is ordinance two twenty-three, twenty twenty-one, thirteen. This is a request to rezoning, um, partial from A one to R one. Um, this property is located out on the Curry Boulevard. Identified as tax net O nine fifty-him, group C, partial zero one seven oh two. Uh, my understanding of this is they want to do residential, about one of this.
That's correct, we can get a legitimate person on that as well. So the planning commission requests that they choose. Of this product. And that's why I need to do that, so I'll be private.
This is uh, they're going to keep the front of the road commercial and develop the rear into residential.
Right.
Mr. Trump, I also, I received a question on this, I'm all dressed. Something that may come up. The ownership and the owner change application was removed, they use your, for a long time. But they found this uh, new ownership process to get that property and closing on it, so that that ownership has changed. Now, our process, this will, of both owners and that, and that did get recorded, I believe, on January, so. Both of them are here and they are, the happiness we're are now, are owners of the property.
But I understand that. This property changed hands with the official application company and and they have the order for the same appointment.
The applicant for the zoning change of action was about four months. And that reported on January eleventh, so it was during the four, mentioned for the planning commission, if you didn't have time to read the citation.
Thanks, Mr. John. Any questions on it? Mr. John?
I've got A one to R one on the top here, then as I go down through here, I won't.
C two.
C two, no.
C two, R three. With the front's going to be two, three. I agree, we understand what's on the front.
The C two was a request from the planning commission, the land next to the highway, C two. The level of change, the planning commission asked them to enter a bridge to the level of change, the third place that the commission, so.
So it is going to R three, oh one, one, if they pay this. C two, it should be.
It will be recorded where portion is being.
So it's C two and R three.
Correct.
Current zoning only gives.
A one.
A one.
Or, excuse me, sorry, that's the next one, that's uh, C two.
The whole track?
Yes.
So it's going from C two, the front portion will land C two and the rear will go to R three. We'll have update on this for Monday night. Yes.
I think it's your first one, sorry. All numbers, email versus are redacted under the open record tag.
What about the applicant signature that is submitted, that wouldn't be redacted?
They submitted, I don't know what is related, it's a change of the safety of the cells. I can see that being redacted, it's just something.
First time I have the receipt, I don't have it.
Do you understand what question is, Sam?
I believe so.
I believe it's no signature by the applicant. And no date. And for these emails and phone numbers and things have been redacted, out.
I would check that, that I grabbed on this. Would be the six years. Side, same balance. So the previous.
It looks like the first reading. I think it's.
So that's, that's all the work that you have. You mean, you want to talk about?
No, just my opinion, I I wasn't at the planning meeting, I watched it online. I think what happened is like, this bottom section is just action taken. And I think, I think it's a poll on it, the poll on, like the applicant should sign up here where the information is, I would think. But for some reason.
Look at the other, the applicant.
Yeah.
What I got, question?
Yes.
What what all is allowed in R three? Uh, I should know, but I don't remember.
That's a single family, multi-residential, the type, sort of tight uh identity, they put the most. Amounts on on property. It would be, it could be multi-res, it could be apartments, it could be townhomes, it could be a single family home. But you're set back, this very close.
Okay, so. It raised this, uh, so originally it was. Come to all of us, Cody Hanes was part of the agreement, first property, which ended up, I can find that's part of the change. So we changed that to, it's now, it's the harbor, it's saying that there's. Uh. This makes it sound like they are. Thank you for playing.
So. Mr. Moreland and Cody Hanes are the.
No.
Frank Moreland and Mr. Harper.
What what does Cody Hanes got to do with it?
He was a previous partner, he backed down.
What what did the planning commission approve?
Mr. Harper and Frank.
Okay.
This was.
Can we get this changed to a branch that has to write people's names on it for Monday night?
I think that's a few of the.
Okay, I think once we get shrink, if we do that, I would ask you to go away.
This is the one that looked at, this is the one that signs.
Okay, thank you. Ms. John?
Uh, was the applicant seen?
Plan?
Anybody there?
Uh, Frank Moreland, uh, felt like the application was basically. Free and self set, uh, free and.
What was what I.
I'm checking. You guys that. We so proud of. Most. You know.
Chris, did you want to say that? I'm sorry.
It was, it was two weeks ago, Brian.
Have you heard of this?
Yes.
Do we, do we need to try and tackle this next month or not this month to get this straight?
I mean, I, we're, 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 we can, we have no problem going down to the office and correct the name and straighten. Change, we have no problem. Resigning paperwork, we did, we did close on the property for that, we actually put out the planning permission. And explain the changes that they could come down, we correct, we have no problem coming down. Oh, we got different change paperwork.
Just just get with Sam, let's get this straight, if it's clear, give us new topics. This might be nice, I thought it might be nice, possibly, maybe.
Mr. John, I will say, they did tell the planning commission about the updated ownership information and all the stuff for us. The branch had the planning permission, so they may have that information before they approved.
Okay.
It's about the updated ownership, the handling, the one that they part, it's all of them discussed as a planning permission before they approved.
Nothing.
So why didn't you get to those stuff then?
Because I was, I'm the secretary of planning, and that was my thing, my thing now, so.
That you.
When I did, I know, but I, and that, so I did not, you know, the excitement of recommendations? That we we had, I did everything, I need those, but I didn't get them to Amy in time to get them in your pack.
I don't.
And that, which I had, she just didn't have it in time to be prepared.
Let's, let's try to get this straight. We want, we don't want to delay it, but we want to get it right. It's that right, that's. Okay.
Mr. John?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Moreland too, just going to build some of the family homes.
Those are our taxes, our taxes.
Oh, good, so we have, we do, we like to talk?
I go first.
All right, anything, we'll get taken care of, y'all get that paperwork ready to get it to us and we'll take care of it. All right, any other comments on that? I'm sorry for all. Uh, moving to our budget amendment, all of our budget amendments basically are moving money around within departments. Uh, they were all reviewed by both the planning committee's last hour. They were all approved to the extent forward to the full body. Um, we will be able to uh take down all this one. Uh, what I will ask before we do that is if anyone would like to pull any one of them for discussion. We will pull it that night, Monday night, and if not, then we'll file a claim motion to take them off. That okay to everybody? Any questions on any of them? They're all pretty much end of the year, moving them around so that we don't go all specific line item in the budget. Some of them are more than others, but all of them are plenty contained in the budget, not going to have. Some of them are more than others, but all of them were money contained in the vote, not going to have to do a front pass for all of them. Um, also, no lease, we will have some, I'm sure. Don't have any yet, but we will. And, uh, other businesses we've got down for the debt, banks, policy, mayor. Like something.
Sure. Here, uh, change here, so it's going to now defer this other department in here.
Does this need a revolution or does this need both or does this need to spray on?
It does, it does need to go, it needs to be now.
Uh, other comments? Okay, uh, Mr. Wall? We have a motion to, this sounds like second. We have a motion to second.